Got a thing within your. They said, well, we'll give you a refund. So all right, that's been approved.
So just a heads up, we are.
Wait, wait.
All right. I will call to order our regular meeting for December for Rose Valley Borough Council. As noted on the agenda, we had a executive session prior to the meeting. It's listed here as an insurance matter. It was actually a personnel matter. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands united.
All right. First on the agenda is approval of minutes for the November meeting. They were circulated electronically previously. They look good to me, but is there a motion to approve those minutes?
No, no.
Is there a second? Second? Any comments, questions, corrections to the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Ron, would you like to make public comment? You're the only one here. The floor is yours.
Please share.
I'd like to make a public comment.
Sure.
I want to thank the gardeners of Rose Valley for the swag wreaths that they put up around town. They do it every year. It's a real delight to see it.
That is nice.
They are very pretty.
Yeah, those gardeners.
Thank you for the thanks. That's a good sentiment. Any other public comment? Leonard, you're up.
I could send you a five-page single-spaced report. You could read it.
Could, or you're here. You can steal your own glory.
So a couple of things. First, I neglected to mention at our November council meeting that on November 9th, the EAC through Katie Rubin organized an event from the Stroud Water Research Center here on Ridley Creek where it's oriented towards young humans and looking at leaf packs, which is something they've been putting in Ridley Creek several times over several years. And they look at the insect life that feeds on the leaves over the course of a month or two months or three months. And then they use that as a tool to see how good the water is in measuring different types of insects. So 40 people attended that and it's, I've attended several of them and the kids are, they love it and it's really interesting. It's sort of like child science, but it gets them really interested. And there's some commentary about the importance of the health of our streams. And I just wanted to mention that that's part of the educational program that the EAC is very committed to and Katie and others have done a wonderful job on that. One of the things that was discovered in that exercise was the presence of New Zealand mud snails in Ridley Creek. That was then shared with the Stroud Water Research Center and they came and did their own testing. New Zealand mud snails are very, very, very small. They're a huge issue in the Great Lakes. They reproduce at an incredible rate. They block water intake pipes in the Great Lakes and they are an invasive species from, I'll let you figure it out. And it was kind of surprising to see that they're in our stream and they will never be out of our stream, but it does make it important like not to wade in our stream and take their boots and wade in another stream because you'll introduce them elsewhere. Some of this is probably inevitable, but because the Pandora's Box is open, but that was an interesting development from an environmental perspective. Also, Katie and Ron did work on salt testing here as a part of a program where we're cooperating with the Stroud Water Research Center and sort of citizen monitoring and citizen science. And so I want to give them a shout out for that. We concluded at our December meeting that by virtue of a variety of new information regarding what might be a best practice or the wisest practice on our MS4 project to do some additional things, including reaching out to our own engineer and perhaps to the Pennsylvania DEP. And therefore, we are deferring until a future date, a proposal for a request for bids after we do some more investigation. And the plan will be to get the project completed in February of 2027. It's, it's sort, the project that we're planning to do involves stream stabilization on Minkus Run or Vernon Run, I'm sorry, up above the bridge from the pool that crosses over Vernon Run. And that has to be done with what are called live stakes. And live stakes are native plants that will root on their own if installed in wet sand at the right time. And the right time happens to be February, period. So you can't do it in the spring or summer and you shouldn't do it before February. You do it just before these stakes will bud out and have the energy from the wood to send out buds and roots. So that's the schedule for the MS4 and more to be said in the future when we have more information. And lastly, the Vinklevoss Charitable Fund has made contributions to the borough for years now and they always ask that it be devoted to environmental improvements, but they understand that the money goes to the borough and Borough Council has to decide what to do with it. They gave $500 in calendar year 2024 and they gave $1,000 this year. The EAC did not make a specific recommendation on what to do with any of that money, but we've been discussing it over the course of this year. And at our December meeting, we have a unanimous recommendation to Borough Council to use the $1,500, 500 from calendar year 2024 and 1,000 from this year, to plant three American plum trees on the west side of Vernon Run near the Old Mill Lane Bridge that goes over Vernon Run and just downstream from the bridge. So it would be on your left as you leave here and just before you cross the bridge. There's an invasive amyr honeysuckle tree that was planted or sprouted in the same area and recommend that that be removed. And I will, I hope, we would liken the EAC and we'll handle this on our own to suggest a small brass plaque and thanks and appreciation to what the Vinklevoss family has done for many years. Roger Latham, our biological tree expert, has shared that American plums are one of the most nutritious and sustaining native plants with both their fruit and their leaves. And they also happen to be beautiful with, and they don't grow too high and they don't get too big. And so that's our recommendation. And then an additional portion of the money to make composting bins for home composting available to residents at a discount. Now, I'm not here to give you the micromanage details on this. At the EAC, we felt that it would be better for people to pay something for these instead of just saying they're free. And the more they pay, the more bins we can get, but we're going to recommend to Borough Council splitting up this contribution to do those two things. So we'll see how much the trees cost and the tree removal would cost and then the balance for composting bins. And I'll just share one last thing. I apologize for talking so much, but the New York Times, they had a fascinating story about a town in Arkansas that is composting all of their waste and making it available for garden soil. And, you know, it was just interesting what different small, they're much bigger than we are. They're 60,000 people, but it was just fascinating because it turns out that methane is produced by all the garbage that we throw out. And if it's landfilled, which is not done here, it's burned at the, at the Covanta plant. But it's just a good environmental practice to compost and use in your garden or vegetable garden or flower garden. And so we don't have real composting availability for our municipality, but to encourage residents to get involved. And it's really educational as much as anything. So that's our recommendation. So I would move with a request that Borough Council approve that recommendation.
So that's not on the agenda for approval tonight? So I don't think we can do that.
Okay. I wrote, I, I guess I wrote to you and Bill that I wanted to do that tonight, but I didn't look at the agenda.
And I didn't look at the agenda with that, with an eye to that.
Okay. And I think I even said, does it, if it has to be, well, it doesn't matter. We can do it next month.
Can we do it in January?
Of course.
Okay.
Can we put it on the agenda for January, please?
Paul, can you make sure that's on the agenda for January?
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
And we'll remember the explanation.
I'll repeat every word.
When January comes, everybody remember plum trees.
Go to the YouTube. Go to the YouTube video.
$1,500.
Before the meeting.
I'll incorporate by reference the YouTube video if there are 15 residents at our January meeting.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right. That takes us to highways, insurance and technology, Tony?
Do the bids?
Oh, right. Recycling.
That's your big one. It's on the agenda.
We're not here.
Well, no, no. Yesterday, we asked that the bids, the recycling contract was advertised in Delaware County time. In response to the advertisement and to my writing letters and sending bid packets to recyclers who had done it for a present recycler and to from the past, Lacston and B&amp;L Creative Waste, we received one response to the, to the request. And that was from Mascara. And so yesterday, we were opening the bids at 11 o'clock on December 9th. Mascara was the only respondent and they came in at 67 for, for every other week, which is what we've been doing. It was 67,320. And we did ask for every week and that I think was $84,000. So the 67,320 was the most economical bid.
I have.
That was, that was lower than what we had put into the proposed budget at 70.
So I have two questions, if I may.
Sure.
So I was aware that was on the agenda. I did see an email saying what the amount was. So my little brain sort of said, well, why am I opening these bids if, why am I doing this in Borough Council if it's already known? And I, I don't know what the rules are in this. We don't have our solicitor, but why have we always done it in a public meeting in the past and not done it that way this time?
We open, we can open the bids before the public meeting.
This is the only time I've ever seen the bids opened at a public meeting.
Okay. Well, I've only done it one way, so I'm ignorant.
So, but now we have to approve.
We have to award the contract.
Okay. Because every year until this year that I've been here, we've had people in the audience who are waiting.
We did it before so we'd know what the numbers were.
For the budget. Okay. That's fine.
The only time I've ever seen that done where we're actually opening the bids at a meeting is here.
For Rose Valley.
It's here. We don't do, we don't do the road repaving and other contracts that way. It gets opened.
Kind of exciting though.
I was just trying to.
It is anticlimactic, but well, so is getting one bid.
And my second, my second question is, am I right in remembering that, no, I guess that was for snow plowing contracts. We reached out to additional people that Katie had identified, Katie Rubin had identified and to encourage them to bid. And we didn't get any real response, although we did get a new bidder. Who was the low bidder. But we don't have another universe of people to invite beyond public bidding, more than what you've already done.
Right. And we're putting it in the newspaper. And like I said, I sent the bids to people who had previously, who had not necessarily requested that they get bid, but they had been our recyclers in the past and I knew who they were, so I sent them bids, but I got no response from them. Only Mascara.
Well, I think I read the tea leaves correctly, that this is an opportunity for me to make a motion that we approve the selection of Mascara as the lowest responsible bidder and I so move.
For every two weeks?
For every two weeks. The EAC has gone on record saying that from an environmental perspective, once every two weeks is preferable. Mindful that residents, many residents, some residents would prefer once every week. And I, I, my own, my own motion is to make it once every two weeks for a combination of financial reasons and environmental reasons.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That carries seven zero. So we have recycling continuing in January. All right. That takes us now over to you, Tony.
Okay. I don't have anything in particular on the agenda. I do have one request, Paula.
Yes.
Would you mind giving Aqua a call and asking them if they could pick up the remaining cones and things that are still on long point later? Thank you. They just have a few cones and stakes and caution tape around. That's it.
Okay. Library, Catherine?
I don't have anything specifically on the agenda either, other than I did on Sunday attend the Hyde Donor event at Helen Kate and it was very well attended. We had a lot of very enthusiastic supporters there and the library continues to want to get the word out that we are interested in new board members, specifically with people with a background in fundraising. So I think I made a plea last month for that also.
Okay.
I'm just going to keep saying it.
Yep. Until the spots are filled. Okay. That takes us to public safety. Staying with the same table there.
Yep. Just going around. The police report shows that there were seven incidents reported in the past month. One of them was a motor vehicle accident. In the other investigations category, there was one suspicious person. Property crimes included two thefts. One was a type fraud or forgery theft. And there were three requests for services, one false alarm and two road hazards, animal debris.
Do we know where the motor vehicle accident was?
No, I don't.
Just curious.
Last month, I know it was on Rose Valley Road because I asked them, but I didn't. For the fire report, there were three automatic fire alarms and another one called good intent. A good intent alarm is one where the person reporting the event believed there was a fire. They were not maliciously calling a false alarm, but in fact, it was a dryer vent or steam or something and that's why it has its own category. That was just news to me. So the traffic report shows, well, traffic kind of in a granular way, but when we look at the number of vehicles, the percentage of vehicles traveling greater than 40 miles an hour, it remains steady at 2.6%. We have a problem with the sensor now that's at Thunderbird Lodge and I have to open up a technical support ticket about it. Put back on that next month. I attended two ALS meetings about the ambulance service moving forward. I think that we have the updated, they provided the name of the attorney, which was requested by council last month in order for you to sign it, Matt.
Yep. And I did sign it and hand it to Paula.
Great. All right. So that is done. They'll be glad. The attorney's name is Ben Reed and they will be retaining him and he will present a timeline for his work at the January 7th meeting, which I'll be attending. Basically, it's an investigatory process at first. He's done this process before, but he'll be meeting with all of the involved parties to take stock of the resources and needs of each of the communities as they're pooled together. And Town Watch, we will have our appreciation in January on the 5th and the invitations will be going out just after the new year, but people already have saved the date.
For January?
No, for February 5th. Yeah. And that's it for public safety.
Okay. That takes us to planning. Shannon?
Yes. I have one agenda item and you have two documents in your packet. One is a resolution to lease a parcel of land from the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission. The other's the lease agreement. So the resolution is for us to lease from the Pennsylvania Commission, a parcel of, a rectangular parcel that used to be where the bronze beaver, that's the animal, right? And plaque were installed and were subsequently stolen. And so we would like to lease the land from Pennsylvania so that we can redo what we'd want with it, which is to replace the, the markers. And it is also part of an Eagle Scout project. It is also ultimately part of the pathway. The end game here actually though is to purchase the parcel. The reason we're leasing it is because it takes a very long time to make the, the actual acquisition, going through all the, the whole bureaucracy of that. So in the interim, we're going to lease that parcel, or that's what the resolution is, to lease it for a dollar a year as we are simultaneously pursuing buying that parcel.
They're just going to give it to us, I think.
Oh, okay. They're donating.
From Paula.
But we will acquire it through donation, but in the interim, so that we can go forward with how we plan to use that parcel, we're going to lease it for a dollar a year. So that's the resolution separately is the actual lease agreement.
And you made the comment, it should be clear that our long-term objective is to acquire it. So I added that.
The donation.
I added a sentence, which is the long-term objective to the, whereas.
So that it's clear why we're doing this and the timetable. Or the ultimatum. So I'll go ahead and make the motion and then we can take any questions.
Is there a second? So your, sorry, your motion is to adopt the resolution?
Eight, 20, 25 to, to authorize signing the lease agreement for the parcel.
As amended to say.
As amended.
Which is the long-term objective.
Okay. And Leonard, did you second?
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I was just curious, interested. So someone has a replica?
Someone's offered.
Yes, someone offered a, a Traymore resident.
Offered to create?
Or buy.
Offered to pay a local arts to make a.
Non-bronze, so that nobody will steal it. Because presumably it was stolen for the material.
Yes.
We don't know, but we assume, right?
So the, the resolution and the lease needs to require naming a state, a Commonwealth of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission as an additional insured, which I understand that. We have a mechanism of making sure that will happen once we pass this resolution.
They're going to demand it as part of the lease.
They'll need a certificate that shows that they're named as an additional insured.
Yes.
Because I, and I understand the rationale for that. I don't think that should increase our premiums over much.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the resolution for the lease? All in favor? Yes, Peter?
Question?
Okay.
Got it. So there's a section by the pensions to Traymore that belongs to Traymore? Is that correct?
I don't know.
What section are you talking about?
Probably like in the curve of the curb line?
Yeah. Bill, there's a section by the curb line that belongs to Traymore.
It belongs to the Borough Rose Valley. Borough Rose Valley owes from the center line 25 out, all the way in. It doesn't, Traymore doesn't start until you're 25 feet away from the center line. So it's all Borough.
So that, that already belongs to the Borough?
Yes.
So what, what the resolution is to extend the property that belongs to the Borough, another?
Well, it doesn't really extend it. There's a little gap of.
I understand. There's a gap that exists currently.
Of 11 feet. And then comes the PHMC parcel.
Right.
Which is only 15 feet wide.
And then comes the Thunderbird Lodge parcel.
Again.
So it's just taking the PHMC parcel and leasing it to us and then ultimately giving it to us? It's just taking.
I would say that the museum's interest would be in that parcel becoming part of what is now the Centennial Foundation.
Yeah, the state will give it to a municipality because they know we're going to be here. They won't give it to some organization that may or may not be here 10, 20, 30, 40 years from now.
So I think I saw seven hands go up. So I think we, I think we voted already.
Not, I don't think it was acknowledged as a vote. I think you recognized.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Carries seven zero. Okay.
May I also, for the record?
Uh huh. Sure.
The museum has been working for about two years on having a copy of the beaver produced in the plaque. Appreciate that somebody in Traymore wants to have a replica made and donated. I think that would be an acceptable temporary solution, but I, I think that interested parties know that the museum's position is that it should be a, it should be a replica. It should be a bronze beaver and a bronze plaque sufficiently anchored to discourage theft of it.
I mean, can I just come?
Since it was mentioned today, someone's offered to make a replica. This is, this is news to.
Would it make more sense to keep an actual duplicate cast? Would it make sense to have a duplicate cast in bronze in the museum and not out in a place where people can rip it off? Because I thought it was copper, not bronze.
Bronze.
Was it bronze? Okay. Well, whatever metal values are, they're only going to get higher over the next 100 years. And I mean, why, and plus, if you have it as a museum.
I just wanted to put that on the record. I, I think it's another conversation.
Okay.
Okay. That's, that's true. That's fair. Fair enough.
I think that takes us to finances. Joe?
Okay. Was the borough aware of this?
Was the Borough aware of this effort? Because it's the Borough's decision on what they want to do. So, the historical society is doing something, seem incumbent on it to notify them.
Well, I think.
It hasn't been our parcel until now. Once we lease it, I think we can work with the museum to figure out what to put back on the, yeah, on the plaque, or on the, where the, where the beaver used to be.
And the, and the plaque.
And the plaque.
As, in the short term for the twenty-six, and as a long-term solution. But I think you got an estimate, it was like, what was your estimate to request?
Our estimate for both, in the current situation, is about forty thousand dollars. We've engaged, we had engaged the company that reproduced the goat on Rittenhouse Square, which was owned by the same artist. And we've been exploring, finding the, the actual model, mold, which may be Florida in the Fang's possession. Again, another, another conversation, but we hope to have it done by 2026. We've been putting that money towards our fundraising towards the book that we're working on. And so, it's happened to be postponed. But certainly, a temporary solution would be good for the Borough, good for the community.
Okay.
You know, Peter, to make the point, right? I just think the Borough, the people that are doing this, if this is new to the Borough, it shouldn't be, it should be something before people go too far down the path and get invested in a particular solution, they should first check with Borough Council to find out if that's what Borough Council wants.
Now that Borough Council has, is going to have the property?
Most certainly, bring it to your attention.
You just did.
I think I just did.
Yeah.
Forty thousand dollars.
Alright, let's go to finances. Joe?
Okay, status of funds is in your packet. Chris Lord told me this evening that he balanced all the accounts, and the balances are what you see there. The income report is also in your packet. Twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents in income. The largest part of that is a nine thousand dollar building permit to Rabbit Run, and another building permit, the geothermal system.
Bills for approval are listed in your packet and all from the general fund. And the list is pretty typical, although our engineer has them. He tends to collect his invoices to the end of the year, so they're represented here. And what else is the permits, you know, they have permits where they are as we continue higher.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills listed in the packet?
Shall I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Carrie, seven zero.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the 2026 budget. Take one and pass it in rounds.
One page?
One page.
Do we have an ordinance still?
If we start on the. Big guy, the original. Does anybody have, everybody have, you don't have, that's, that's, get your. Thank you.
I thought that was just with your hand.
Is there any others left over?
Do you have to pay both sides?
Yeah.
Why does everyone say? It is different numbers.
Okay, so if we start on the expense side, there was a few additions that we had over the last month. The fire company calculation came in, and it was higher than what we originally proposed on the budget, came in at thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We had put in there, I think, about thirty-three thousand.
The formula to get to that number is unchanged from that year?
It did change, yes, because certain components of the formula changed. And the one that did was, the big one was the assessed value of property in Rose Valley.
But the, the calculation methodology is the same, it's just the inputs change.
Then the other one was the medical insurance. We've had a decision from a second staff person to claim her benefit on medical insurance. So, medical insurance went from thirty-three hundred a year up to sixty-four seventy-three, which reflects the insurance for Paula and Lisa. Everything else stayed the same. We have a zero surplus, zero deficit budget. It calls for the, you look on the other side of the. Calls for a millage of one point three-nine, which is a five point three percent increase over 2025. The assessed value of realty, real property in Rose Valley went down from two hundred and six million, one hundred and thirty thousand to two hundred and four million, six hundred and eighty-eight. That's a result of about one point four million dollars in assessment reductions from individuals appealing the assessments.
So, this, in, in my view, it seems like this five percent increase is being largely driven by the millage more than anything, because our expenses are only up less than three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, and the fact that the assessment, total assessments were a million.
That seems to be what's driving the five percent increase here.
And we did also give the Rose Valley folk a ten thousand dollar tax forgiveness, amusement tax forgiveness, and we're paying six thousand more for, six thousand seven hundred more for ALS ambulance.
That's right.
So, we cut other things that were higher last year to kind of make up for that.
Yeah.
But we're still left with a.
We talked about the ambulance funds last month, and that's a new item on the budget, sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Still, it's pretty close if we didn't, if the assessments hadn't gone down so much.
Yeah.
I mean, on a net-net basis, we're budgeting three thousand dollars and round numbers more for health insurance for one of our employees, and it's a three thousand dollar delta. I mean, so that's an.
It's very close.
An expense that is made available based on our practices to one of our employees, and so, in a sense, we've kept all other expenses flat.
Yeah, and our revenue, our non, non-real estate tax revenue is flat as well.
And we've given up our amusement tax. So, we've reduced our taxes.
And we have a nondiscretionary.
To one beneficiary.
A nondiscretionary expense of ambulance services, which we've not had in the past. Can't do anything about it.
So, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the budget.
So, we're in, we don't have our solicitor here. We're approving, we will be adopting an ordinance setting the millage rate. We also adopt the budget?
Adopt the budget, and we approve the ordinance.
Okay, and do we have the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
It's next up.
Okay, yeah, I don't see it in the packet.
Do we advertise it?
Nine dash twenty-five.
This is all been advertised, right?
I don't think she, no.
I think if you tell me what your millage is, I can go do the ordinance again.
Gotcha.
One point three-nine.
Okay, so, Joe, you made a motion, or are you going to make?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the budget for 2026.
Is there a second?
As distributed.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions, other edits? Okay, all in favor of adopting the budget? Carrie, seven zero. We might as well do the resolution.
Resolution nine dash twenty twenty-five, which sets the salaries for Borough Manager and Administrative Assistant. The tax collective fee, the mayor's compensation, the solicitor's retainer. Under section one, under section two, there's no change there. The paid vacation for employees. Section three, there's no change, except we want to consider making a wording change there. And I would recommend that, as we read, the Borough will pay up to one half of the medical insurance premium for the Borough Manager and administrative assistant, their spouses and eligible children, up to a maximum of eight hundred dollars per month.
For each one?
Yeah. For the Borough Manager and the Administrative Assistant.
But it's, the numbers are for each one?
For each one, right.
I think that's important to make clear.
Yeah, not for, also, their spouses and their. So, what happens with that, does somebody break down the line?
The Borough will pay individually, one half of the medical insurance premium for the Borough Manager and Administrative Assistant, up to a maximum of eight hundred dollars each.
Okay, so I, I think I, I would do it this way, and see, see if you agree. So, the Borough would pay one half, or you want to say up to one half? I think we should say one half.
I think we should say the lesser of one half or eight hundred dollars.
So, I was gonna, I was gonna word it this way and see what you think. The Borough will pay one half of the medical insurance premium for the Borough Manager slash Secretary and Administrative Assistant, parentheses, including their spouses and eligible children, close parentheses, up to a maximum of eight hundred dollars per month each. Does that work?
That works for me.
Okay. So, then, Joe, did you want to make the motion to adopt that resolution?
Make the motion to adopt resolution nine dash twenty twenty-five as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on that?
I have a question, it's just a math question. So, if it's up to eight hundred dollars a month, but we're budgeting the year for additional three.
Well, we know what they're.
Because you know what the costs are, so it's not going to go up.
It's about five hundred and fifteen dollars for the two of them combined.
Okay.
A month.
Sorry, and I was late to the conversation, so that's my fault, but like, the math wasn't working.
I think the ordinance has to be a voice vote?
Yes, but Paul is typing it up as.
You want to go on to the next one?
Let's vote on.
Can we vote on this one?
Vote on the resolution. All in favor? Did we vote? I didn't think we'd voted.
No, we have not voted.
No.
We have not voted. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, seven zero. Let's come back to the ordinance. What's the approval of?
Can we do the other approval?
The January first paycheck?
Well, Paula and Lisa get paid on January first. And we just always, every year approve having them get their paychecks in. And also, we pay this workers' compensation insurance check, which is due before our first meeting in January. So, this is a recurring item. Joe, do you want to make a motion about that?
Remove that we approve the January first paychecks for Paula and Lisa and workers' compensation check, insurance check. I'll do them individually.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, just to comment, you know, we just approved the bills for December, and part of what we approved was the paychecks issued December first to Paula and Lisa.
December first.
And we're approving it now, so why can't we approve the paychecks in January?
Maybe, maybe Paula can, I, tell us why we need to approve the January first. I know you've explained it many years, but we approve the first.
Yeah, we, we do, because we don't have another meeting, and the first meeting we have in January is the fifth.
Right.
You want to just wait?
Well, I'm just looking at, you know, we just approved the December first paychecks on December tenth.
But I, but I think there's, in the past, haven't we?
I don't recall this at all.
Well, it's, it's about paying paychecks on the first. I, if you want, I can go back. It's, I know it's.
I know we do, I've done it every year.
We have, we've done it every.
And I'm happy to do it again.
I'm okay, I'm just wondering why the inconsistency. What's special about January, when every other month we ratify it after the fact?
But there's something that we always used to pass in December that said we would approve the payment of the paychecks on the first of the month.
Instead of the fifth, instead of the what, instead of the second Wednesday, you get paid on the first.
Right.
But that's not, that's not Matt's question.
That's not the motion that's before us. The motion here is to pay the January one.
On the first.
Right.
And Matt's, I don't want to speak for you, Matt, but I understand your question, and we're not getting an answer. The question is, the question is.
I can, because there you, actually, there used to be a whole list of things we used to approve in December that we don't do anymore. And I could go get some old minutes, and you could go through the list of all the things we used to approve in December. Somehow, that got, got lost in, in different treasures and different financial people, but hold on.
So, let's table that. I mean, the question is, is there something about January that we have to do it? Or should the resol, should the motion be that we're, we're gonna pay all of the paychecks to Lisa and? Right.
We should pay whatever their paycheck is due.
Yeah.
Period.
And we do that, it's just a question.
But I don't, we don't have the paycheck paid.
We approve them after, all the time.
When is the paycheck actually issued? It should be issued on?
On the first.
And we know.
The first of each month.
And then we retro approve them.
They get paid, and then we have a meeting, and it's in our bills for approval, and we approve paying the bill that we paid.
Already.
A couple of weeks ago, which is fine.
I agree with that.
But why do we have a resolution on this?
That was my question.
That's, because we do it every year.
Right, alright, so let's, let's table that for now.
Let's get back to the ordinance, before we can move on to the next one.
Either way. Let's, let's move forward on the ordinance then, now that we have it in front of us. So, we now have ordinance number three sixty-one establishing the millage, that will establish the millage of one point three-nine mills for 2025. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance?
Shall I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, was that Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay. Hang on one second. All in favor?
Oh, wait.
Oh, we need a roll call for this?
No, hang on, there's something in here about the amusement tax that needs to come out.
Thank you, Tony.
So, in the first paragraph, in the opening paragraph, claiming the continuance without change, but one percent realty transfer tax. change of the one percent realty transfer tax and the amusement tax. So we need to strike comma and the amusement tax.
I think, is it the whole sentence, or is it just, is the amusement tax the only thing under the Local Tax Enabling Act, or is it all of these things?
No.
Well, the only thing we're continuing is the real estate transfer.
Continue, right, this continues.
Does under the Local Tax Enabling Act only refer to the amusement tax, or does it refer to all of them?
No, I think it also refers to that.
The realty tax as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So we just say that...
So just that one little section comes out.
Well, and then it comes out in section four as well? Correct.
We have no control over the realty transfer tax. We don't impose that, that's the county tax.
No, but we're...
We get one percent.
We get one percent. They split it with us, but we don't control it.
Sorry, we split it with, I can't hear you.
The county.
Okay, thank you.
That's also repeated on page two, section four.
Right.
Yeah. So we're striking and the amusement tax. And just to be really picky, section four also refers to the per capita tax, but that's not referenced in that.
That's the school, school district, not us.
We shouldn't be passing resolutions about taxes we have no control over.
We used to somehow get involved in the per capita tax.
We did.
And we decided, Lynn Kelly, when she was treasurer, said, "It's too complicated, the school district doesn't do it right," and we just told them, "We don't, we don't get a per capita tax anymore."
We don't get a share of that.
We don't get a share.
Right. So should we strike the per capita tax?
Because we don't get a tax.
Well, we also don't set the one percent realty transfer tax to Joe's...
We don't set it, no. That's a county.
Well, we do get it, but...
We received it.
But we don't have control over whether we get it, that's by grace of the county.
Right. Section four says council hereby ordains continuance of the one percent transfer tax.
If we're going to continue to collect it...
Does that whole section go?
No, we don't, I don't think we collect it.
Just scratch the section, right?
The county collects it.
What's the point of that section?
And then cuts us a chunk.
Oh, and then gives us our portion?
By grace, not by anything we have a control over.
I have no idea what Act seventy-seven is. You better not do anything to get some legal advice from these people.
Since we've done it, and they've existed every year, we can change this one, but we don't get the per capita tax, we don't get the amusement tax.
I don't think we can change it next year.
Thank you, Tony.
I'm the guy who reads everything.
He reads all the words, it's good.
Are people comfortable just striking and the amusement tax from the intro paragraph, and then in section four, the per capita tax and the amusement tax?
In section, yeah.
And just leave the one percent realty tax alone?
You can always change it next year.
Well, why are, why are we, to quote the language of the very first paragraph, why are we proclaiming the continuance of a tax over which we have no control?
Because I'm, without the solicitor sitting here, I think it's safer, we get some of the benefit of that. I think it's safer to just leave it alone in the language.
Okay. And in both places?
I agree.
I'll defer to that wisdom.
And if next year we decide we should take it out, we'll take it out?
Fair.
Okay. So, there was a motion made by Shannon, seconded by Cheryl. Are you good with those two amendments?
Those amendments, yes.
Okay. And then we need to do this by voice?
Yes. Ordinance, yes. Ordinance has to be by voice.
Okay. Tony?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I'm an aye. Shannon?
Aye.
Joe? Carrie, seven-zero. Okay.
So, this is what we used, the treasurer used to say at the end of every year in the December meeting, so, you know, about transferring, but then here it would be about loaning.
Right.
But then here, to pay salary and medical...
So this is about paying it every month, in advance?
Right, every month.
Not just January?
Yeah.
Right, and then, and to pay regular utility bills if needed. So, if you want to just take part of this, we could take part of this.
Well, I don't, I think we just do that.
Okay, I put, yeah, we do.
We just do it, and then we ratify it.
Okay.
So I, I would suggest just making an approval of the workers' comp. I don't even know that we need to approve that in advance, we're just going to ratify it.
You're going to pay it in the first of the year, and then we're going to ratify on the fifth, or whatever the next, second Wednesday.
Sure, whatever you, whatever you guys want to do.
It should be in the bills for approval next month.
Right.
Yeah.
And it just happens to have already been paid?
Yeah.
We're going to then approve it.
Okay, so, continue to do paychecks on the first of the month, but then they'll just get paid at the...
Right.
Or get approved.
Approved, correct.
All right.
Same thing with, yeah, same thing with utility bills, if it's going to be a penalty fee.
Okay.
Same thing if we don't...
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, Joe, you had made a motion that Shannon seconded, do you want to withdraw it?
Sure.
All right, so that takes us to the transfers.
Approval of year-end transfer funds from operating funds to capital reserve, and then we turn around and make a beginning of the year seventy-thousand-dollar loan to capital reserve.
And these are the, these are the corresponding transactions where we're lending ourselves money from one fund to pay those bills that we're going to pay on the first of the month, and other things in the beginning of the year before we start to get our tax revenues. So, instead of having to take a bank loan, we're able to just borrow our own money and do that, and we do it via these inter-fund transfers. So is there a motion to approve the end-of-year transfer of funds from operating funds to capital reserve?
So moved.
Where is that? Where is that?
I don't think we have.
We don't, because it's, it's not a resolution or an ordinance, we're just approving, moving what's left in the operating funds to capital reserve, and then turning around and sweeping seventy thousand back into operating funds to seed our accounts for the beginning of the year. Okay.
Is that to be voted on?
Not yet. Yes, we're about to vote on it. So, the motion was made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That carries seven-zero. And then, is there a corresponding motion to then lend ourselves seventy thousand from capital reserve back to operating funds?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
That carries seven-zero as well. Okay, so I think that's it for finances?
Yes.
Yep.
The term really warm with finances has to do also with bonds replica thing, forty-thousand-dollar bonds replica thing. So in, in the Borough Council, like, it's sort of put out there, I should preface it by saying, I've been down in the business for five and five years, saying that we are giving every year twenty-six thousand dollars to the Centennial Foundation, and then they're turning around and spending that money on a forty-thousand-dollar bonds replica?
They're not.
No, no.
They're not. That was fundraising they were doing. The twenty-six thousand dollars is a match to a grant that they get from the PHMC to continue to renovate Thunderbird Lodge.
Renovations to the building.
Good.
It's part of the match, in fact.
We should talk. We're raising, we're raising the money ourselves. We're not allowing you to do it.
I know, but there's an offset. When the borough gives you money, and then you go and raise money for stuff.
It's, it's two different animals. The money is given to the Centennial Foundation.
It's two different...
As part of a matching grant by PHMC for the work being done on the building.
And, and so the borough is helping to pay for that?
It's not the museum, the Centennial Foundation is the huge foundation.
Right, it's the foundation, it's the building. So who's paying for the bond funds, forty thousand dollars?
Nobody.
Nobody, yeah.
Nobody, nobody's ordered it, nobody's wanted.
No money for it, yeah.
Okay. Managers report?
Only that we have a lot of resolutions to pass tonight. Matt, you want to just handle the...
Sure.
Appointing with the auditors, sending it from...
Here we go.
All right. So is there a motion to adopt resolution ten-dash-twenty-five, appointing Fisher Kunein as our auditor for twenty-twenty-six?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven-zero.
Seven, I voted yes.
Congratulations, Fisher Kunein. Is there a motion to adopt resolution eleven-dash-twenty-twenty-five, setting the various permit fees listed in this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a...
Second.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are these different?
No, they're the same, but we, we approve them every year. And, and really, they're, the permit fees were recommended by our, our building, our building inspector, who works for Bob Lynn, our tech's office, and he's a building inspector for many municipalities, and knows what all the permits are in all municipalities, and so he's the one that recommended to us all the permit fees that you see on that resolution aloud.
And, and he recommends these, and these are also the same as last year's?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie, seven-zero as well. Next up, is there a motion to adopt resolution twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-five, reappointing Hope Thurlow to the planning commission?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
She's willing to serve.
Good to know, before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, seven-zero. Similarly, is there a motion to adopt resolution thirteen-dash-twenty-twenty-five, reappointing Bruce Hunt to the zoning hearing board?
So moved.
So moved.
You don't want the honor?
I might have to abstain.
No, you don't have any financial interest in it.
Okay.
Okay, so...
You can vote no.
Well, you can vote no.
Be on the record, yeah.
Awkward Christmas dinner, but, okay. All in favor of adopting that? Carrie's seven-zero. Next up, resolution fourteen-dash-twenty-twenty-five, is there a motion to adopt that resolution, reappointing Ron Plou to the EAC?
I so moved, and I am advised that he is agreed to serve.
You want to contest that? Okay.
Second, second.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's seven-zero as well. And lastly, is there a motion to adopt resolution fifteen-dash-twenty-twenty-five, reappointing Ron's colleague Katie Rubin to the EAC?
So moved.
And I'd like to second, and also say that it's a very enthusiastic request on behalf of both of them.
Super. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's seven-zero as well. Congrats to all of our reappointees, and my sincere thanks for continuing to serve your community, it's much appreciated. That takes us to the mayor's report.
This is just a reminder, that on Monday, January fifth, we'll have a Borough Council reorganization meeting, and the re-elected council members will get sworn in, and the new replacement for John Lynn Finelli, and Paula, I guess, is tax collector. So a short ceremony, we usually don't do any business, we do it on the first Monday of the month.